Hey guys, y'all come on in if you don't mind shutting the door on the back for the Lees. Alright, great crowd here tonight. My name is Donnie Harwood and we are the Tea Party of Bradley County. We've got some liberty guys in here coming up tonight. We are terribly excited to see a group here tonight. We've got one councilman here tonight and he has talked to me briefly just a second ago and I think we've got a lot to talk about tonight. I think we can iron out a few things that... And that's the whole reason we invited these guys is so that we can get the information firsthand. Just talking to him just a second ago, I can already see where we kind of may have had some information that may have got put out to the public that maybe in some way shouldn't have been there or should have been there and interpreted along the way. But we've got a good program tonight, got a few things we want to talk about to you tonight. How many residents from the South World Pool site do we have here tonight? Good, good. Thirty, forty, thirty, forty people? Good job. Glad you guys are here tonight. This is what this is about. We've gotten a lot of flack over the last few weeks. All we're doing is informing you guys of what we are being given in a plan. We're on your side. We're here to represent you. We told you guys when Dan and I went out into that Saturday, a couple Saturdays ago, and went out to the community and you guys were so receptive and so willing to get the information and to find out what's going on in your community. And we felt obligated to come back and tell you after we had gotten pretty severely hit by a lot of negative press and that sort of thing about what we were doing. So we wanted to kind of pull you guys together tonight and just kind of make sense of it all. You guys have concerns because you live there. I have concerns because I don't want to see anybody taken from their property. From a taxpayer standpoint, we want our taxes fairly represented. We want our folks in government to recognize that we are here and that the Tea Party represents the people and we are very glad that you guys are here so you can hear us tonight. Do we have any... I know we've got one member of the press here. Do we have any other members of the press here tonight? Okay, Channel 12 News here. I know we've got Tenship Productions, tenshipproductions.com. Pat and Mike Mallard, they graciously give up their video. If you guys want to visit their site, tenshipproductions.com. Full of information sort of like this. They're doing a documentary. They want you to just kind of start... Look at them and purchase stuff from them and support these guys because they do so much for us. They go from Washington DC to Texas. They go everywhere looking for information to put on their website that protects the people. So you guys give them some support at Tenship Productions, T-I-N-Shipproduction.com. I've also got a few announcements to make. We're going to introduce Mike Scalia here in a little bit. He's running for governor of the state of Tennessee. We've got to get Mr. Haslam out of there. We've got Chris Turner here in the house tonight. He's running first district school board. We've been talking a lot about him tonight. We've got a lot of good answers from him. Real happy with him. Any otherbody running for office?
The tickets we have.
Okay. Anybody else running for office? Anything like that? Okay. Also, Pat back here, she's got four tickets to the Win Back Rally in Texas. Restoring Love Rally in Texas. If you guys are interested in those, she's working gladly. Got all four of you going?
And we have the Freedom Pack for Freedom. Also four more tickets.
So talk to her after the thing and we'll get you started. What we usually do is get started with the pledge and the prayer. So if you guys would just stand and I'll be asking someone, pray for me. Barbara, would you care to pray since we get through the pledge? Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every substance.
Our most kind gracious heavenly Father, we come in unity this evening with open minds and open hearts and open spirits. Guide us as we deliberate over these important issues that are so concerning to individuals in this room and those that are not in attendance. Keep it honest, keep it truthful, keep it in love. We ask that you give your wisdom to our local leaders as well as our state and our national leaders who are going through some very difficult times, situations that we have never felt the need to face upon this country that we have blessed so well, that we have lived so foolishly and squandering and not appreciating. Please forgive us of all of our sins and all of our transgressions and all of our foolish ways. Be with us dear Lord. We need to walk in your grace and ask for your continued grace of understanding and forgiveness. All this we ask in your name, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you guys. Fair representation of the South Side folks that live over there. We're going to give you an opportunity to ask questions. So far, I've only got one councilman that showed up tonight, Mr. Bill Estes from your district. And he's going to answer some questions for you guys. We're going to do a real quick presentation, fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes of some information that we got, that we gave out to you guys while we gave it to you. And then we can fill in with Karen a little bit and then Dan's going to say a word. And then we're going to get into the question and answer. So first thirty, thirty-five, forty minutes should be introduction of the material that we've got and just kind of want to show you what's going on. The reason we're here tonight is to discuss the growth plan specifically. We're going to be talking about the central growth plan in the area around the World Pool area. This is just one of many spots in the county and the city that are going to be looked at for redevelopment, for brownfield development, infield development. All those words mean different things but basically there's going to be a countywide, citywide change in our community. And we're estimating that the cost of the package will be anywhere from four to ten billion dollars over a twenty to twenty-five year period. Our answer for that, the only people that are going to pay for that is who is in this room and who is in the county and the city. So that's going to be quite a bit of difference there. Hey Paul, back in there today? Paul's one of our planners. What we've got is the Bradley County 2035 Plan. I went ahead and I've looked through this several times. I've done an analysis of it, studied it word for word in many places. And I've found a lot of stuff that's going to be affecting us in the community. One of the main reasons that we reached out to the central community was because information that we received at the charrette. A charrette meaning a meeting where they try to get consensus. A meeting where they present the information and then we look for answers and ask questions and that sort of thing. And we had that three day event at the mall and during that three days, we collected a whole lot of information. And one of the biggest portions of that information that disturbed us was the wording of what was going to happen in the South Side to three hundred homes in around the World Pool area. That area, when I referenced it to one of the planners and Bill made a good point that he's a county planner and there may be some misinformation on this, but one of the pieces of information that I got shortly after that was the area south of there, which is, you know, from King Edward, Eighteenth Aurora and Wildwood and Nine. It's a big box there, you can see. This was given to me voluntarily as the three hundred homes that were to be demolished or redeveloped in the area. And that information came from one of the planners and I don't even care to mention his name tonight because he's not here. But this is where it's kind of starting as far as information. I've got plenty of that information. Based on the information that we got from the charrette, seventy-three percent disapproved of the plans that were presented by the government, by the Bradley County planners. And one of the consultants, McBride, Dale and Clarion, we disagreed. The people who attended the three day charrette disagreed. Seventy-three percent of the issues disagreed or strongly disagreed. More than eighty percent disagreed or strongly disagreed about the central city plan, the one that we informed you guys of and that we saw some wording in there that very much disturbed us. During this process, we did, for three days, we complained, we wrote on boards, we rolled up the walls. Wherever they asked us to respond, we responded. We continually had some kind of dialogue going over three days. At the end of the three days, we were supposed to get an analysis of what was going on during that time and we didn't get that. So what we did was we asked for the information that they compiled that from and I just basically went with my cellphone and just videotaped every page of the questionnaires that were filled out by you guys and people in the community. I think there was around a hundred and fifty or so total...
Don't lie.
Yeah, yeah. There's around a hundred and fifty or close to that total surveys, some in different areas that were less and that sort of thing. The central area, I think, got forty, fifty, sixty surveys done and eighty-three, eighty percent of those were negative. We went to and asked and said, "Why are you not presenting the data?" And they said that because the data was too negative. I think that's, not listening to the public is very crucial. We displayed that to everyone. We went to the county commission, the council and we encouraged that someone listen to us about this plan. Well, when no one decided to listen, we went ahead and, well, first of all, in the 225 Keith Street Monthly Publication of the Bradley Cleveland Chamber of Commerce, Volume Forty-Six, Number Four, dated April 2012, basically he wrote his whole article. Chamber President Gary Farlow wrote his whole article about the charrette and that the negativity that was coming out of the charrette was, for one, was not of good taste and it probably didn't represent the whole county or the whole city. So they spent a whole, it mentioned me, but, you know, I think my name is in here anyway. And they went on to say that the Tea Party has a right to be negative, but they should let everybody else speak before the... They kind of gave us the thought that maybe the Tea Party took over the meeting and gave all the negative responses. We witnessed many, many people going in there through the three days and they weren't all Tea Party guys. Don, one thing about that, there is, this is absolute lies. This is a lie. I was in every one of these meetings. This never happened. No one. I have it on tape and I tend to prove and put it on YouTube that this is a lie. We pay these people in excess of four hundred thousand dollars a year to represent the community and this guy gets in there and lies. And if he was here, I would tell him to his face that he's a liar. This never happened. No one ever interrupted the meeting. I don't believe anyone ever stood up. All we did was ask questions. It was apparently questions that they didn't want to ask. You know what? And then he gets in and lies. He will be called to task for this. We fund these people. They lie. If they lie about this, what else did they lie about?
Based upon that 225 Keith, there was an editorial. There was a letter to the editor that was written and submitted and to counter the information that was delivered in that editorial by Mr. Farlow. And it was in Sunday's paper, June 24th, "Writer Takes Issue With Newsletter." So the counter voice was heard and the banner did...
And I'm reading right here on the second paragraph. "It was obvious that the Tea Party's objective in attending the meetings was to disrupt the process and to prevent any meaningful discussion of the community's needs and desires for the future." That's the whole reason that we were negative. I mean, not negative, but while we were voicing our complaints about this growth plan is because you guys, you thirty or forty in here and the two hundred and sixty others, the information that they gave us told us, "They want to tear your house down and redevelop on your sewer lines." Now, I'll show you that in just a second, the proof of that. Now it's gone like full circle. You can see in today's paper where Doug Berry disputes the three hundred number saying he just made it up and it was one corner of the World Pool lot. After we get it done, it's going to be three hundred homes. Well, that's not what he put out in his draft and I'll show that to you in just a second. So these guys have lied to us. So what we did, and this was done by one of our members anonymously because the person that handed these out is still anonymous because he is fearful of coming out because of what he thinks his government may do to him. On the initial day that he pulled this out, this is the flyer, this is the controversial flyer that you guys have probably seen. And it was placed based on the information that they gave us at the April charrette. For three days, gave us information, handed me a piece of paper and said, "Here's our white draft plan. This is what we have planned for your community." Okay? I take it, read it, see the three hundred homes going to be developed. This gentleman takes the information and hands it out to you guys because he has a few friends down there. He works in the area, lives in the area and he was terribly concerned about what was going on down there. So all of this information got put out. The city council shortly after that, with the mayor's approval, suggested a resolution, I guess you would call it, and they passed it seven to zero. And these gentlemen up here representing tonight voted seven to zero to investigate the anonymous person that was handing out the flyers in the area. Made the banner frontline, "City is Critical, The Flyer Claims Council Okay's Investigation." The investigation was to hunt down, that's my words, hunt down, expose and arrest that person. Expose and arrest were the mayor's words. Hunt down was my word. But that's kind of what the gentleman that handed out these flyers, the information that he got. The night that he got, heard this information being on the TV, I think it was Channel Nine and Channel 12 News, he called me very upset. I heard his wife and his children crying in the background saying, "Daddy, daddy, I don't want to go to jail. I don't want to go to jail. I don't want to go to jail." Okay? This is tyranny, guys. This is what your government is capable of doing at any time. And the reason that they put fear in your guys' hearts is to keep you from speaking up. That is the sole reason that this was done, initiated by the mayor. The mayor has used this tactic before in other venues. I've seen it, but not quite as extensive as this one. To have us arrested, okay, for passing out information in the community, even though it was disputed, he didn't like the information that was out there, but it was the exact information that we'd just gotten prior at the last public meeting that we attended. There is no more endless, we've still got the First Amendment. Thank God or we would be, I would probably be in a federal prison right now. "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion on forgiving the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or the press or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." Since that time, I was contacted by an attorney who wondered, wanting to know if I wanted to protect my free speech rights. This is the year 2012, guys. We shouldn't be hiring attorneys to tell us that we have the right to hand out a flyer in a community warning of demolition or a redevelopment in your area based on the information that they gave us. We should not live in fear in any community in the United States because the First Amendment protects that. As long as we've got the Constitution, I think we have a right and I know we've got a right to present any information in the public that we want to. He called on the district attorney of the 10th Judicial District, Bradley, McMinn, Monroe and Hope Counties, Sheriff's Department and local authorities to find us and arrest us. Okay? Next day, I went on the, I believe it was the 19th or 20th, the next day after the mayor made his announcement that he wanted us all arrested, hunted down and exposed. You know, exposure, why does he want us exposed? So he can embarrass us? So he can take our careers? Called the Stephen Bev, who is the district attorney for our area, the next day and he was out of the office. So I talked to his assistant district attorney and he said that we, the Tea Party has been putting out information for years and that there is no way that they're going to touch this because they know that it's a First Amendment issue. Okay? Wes Snyder put out a piece of paper here, a first release statement. And it's from Stephen Bev to Chief Snyder. Chief Snyder said he didn't want anything to do with it because he knew it was a First Amendment issue and it's a very hot issue and he wasn't going to resent nobody. Okay? "It has come to my attention that a flyer was circulated here in Cleveland making certain claims regarding property development. While I understand the concern expressed by the mayor's office, there is no indication that these flyers are inciting violence or otherwise places lives in jeopardy." Okay? "Therefore, the views and opinions expressed in the flyer constitute protected free speech." Amen. Thank God we've got some sheriff and a district attorney that'll listen and abide by the Constitution. "It is my understanding that these flyers are being left on porches and storm doors. Provided there is no criminal trespassing occurring and at this time does not appear this applies, it would be improper for the Cleveland Police Department to become involved in this matter." Thank God our Cleveland Police Department is in... This is one of the last fundamental rights that we've got, guys, and free speech is definitely one of them. Okay? We can go out into any community as long as I'm not harassing you, as long as, if the information is out there and I'm giving it to you, it's legal. Okay? Remember that. Do not let this government be a tyrant, tyrannical government and you live in fear from day to day. Okay? We also had other flag and I'll go with this real briefly. This come in a, it's kind of funny, that was an anonymous letter from the editor of the Cleveland Datty Banner, June 21st, 2012. The viewpoint, I later learned who it was, but his name's not in here, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to name it. It may remain anonymous. Says, in relation to this flyer, it says, "Stop alarming the public." Stop alarming the public. This is our press, guys. This is our newspaper telling me and telling you to stop alarming the public. How does that sound? You've got a mayor that's wanting to hunt you down, expose you and arrest you and you've got the press telling the people to stop alarming the public.
Oh, yes.
Wow. Exactly. Okay, in relation to this, to the World Pool site, yet this does not and should not excuse such reckless behaviors, anything less than publicly alarming scare tactics. This is the editor at the banner. "Aimed at furthering the political agenda of certain groups and individuals." Political agenda. In his statement, "What he has the right to make," thank you very much. "Harwood takes issue with the mayor personally as well as with the council's vote." This is a First Amendment constitutional, state constitution charter, city charter issue. This is not just me, guys.
Apparently, the district attorney, the police chief, the sheriff also took issue with the actions of the mayor.
Yes, and that's what I just said. "Which he has the right to make, Harwood states, takes issue with the mayor personally," it wasn't personal, "as well as this, as with the council's vote." "He refers to their action as tyrannical government in a free society and called on area residents to demand their resignations as well as that of Greg Thomas, city planning director." This is absurd, as the next sentence. Guys, even when I was a kid, my parents, if they heard something like this or they were treated, that'd be drastic measures taken. And that's not, that is not the route we want to go. But there would be, a hundred years ago, a hundred and fifty years ago, there would be people stomping, riding their horses into town, wanting to hurt somebody and we are getting condemned for protecting the Constitution. Here is the, and I'll run by this real quick, the report of the mayor and the council members. The voting here is where they vote, seven to zero. It's back there on the back table if you want a copy of it. "Councilman May moved to begin an investigation of the flyer. The motion was seconded by Councilman Hughes and a roll call unanimously passed. Councilman May stated the South Side Development Committee has met several times and people in the area want it improved. He wants everyone to know they are invited to attend the meetings. Nothing has been determined what the new development would be, but we don't want the old factory to become a blinding part of our community and decrease property values. This flyer has upset many citizens and has spread untruths throughout the community. This is a tactic to scare people. Threats have been spoken about council members and people get upset and might take it further than they should. Mayor Roland stated that whoever wrote this needs to be exposed. He then asked the council for a motion asking the police chief, city attorney, the district attorney's office to have a full investigation concerning this to determine if any laws have been broken and uncover the source of the flyer. Councilman Estes stated he wants to see something good from this. Mr. Thomas and staff were able to speak with individuals and a lot of good came from that and now the truth is out there." Is the truth out there? I think the reason we're here is because the truth got put out.
Mayor Roland thinks they exposed for the dictator who's been in the last twenty years until they bring this down.
And I think we're probably throwing that narration in.
I have a question. Has there been, since all of this, has there been something undocumented of what the plan is? We're hearing a lot of what it isn't and we're hearing a lot of what is.
Louder.
We're hearing a lot of, my question is, we've heard a lot about what has, what the circumstances have been and what the charges and what the allegations are and what we perceive the truth to be. Has there since the city has made these threats or these ultimatums? Have they sat down and laid out what their intention is for this area that's in question?
That's a good question, Barbara. And if you're looking at public events, the only public event I know of was held in April. That was the last public event. Am I wrong? That was the last public notification of any changes. The city council had a meeting? Okay, then we'll talk about that. And what we've got is the information that was given to us at the charrette. Okay? That's what came into your communities. Okay? If I am sitting for three days, gave up three days of my time, stepped away from my family for three days, had other guys with me, Karen, Dan, Frank, all you guys were there. There were a lot of people there in the community. And we stayed there for three days to get the information that we handed out to you guys. During that three days, I was handed this piece of paper. Here, take this home. This is our draft plan. This is what we have plans for the future. Okay? From that information, and that's where this dispute started, from that information, the only information that I know that existed at that time, because I stayed there for three days and I received the information, I want to read on page three, under housing mix type and maintenance, what we were given. Okay, this is not what I made up. This is what was given to me as the only plan that I knew existed at that time and given to me and I handed it and I brought it home. I remarked on my little... I remarked on my little questionnaire that I didn't like it, didn't like the changes. Seventy-three percent of the people that went there, eighty percent of the central city plan disapproved of it, but they handed it out anyway and gave it to me. Okay? I take the information as an information advocate for you guys, and the information is distributed out into the public, and we got called absurd, crazy, liars, because we handed out the information that was given to us, and the most available public information that we had was given to me, and this is what it said. An area of particular concern consists of several blocks of postage-stamped lots. Okay? I asked the planners what postage stamp meant, and just the little squares within the community. Located directly south of the World Blue complex, not in the complex, as they said in the paper today, outside the complex. The area consists of small workforce housing on small lots built during the 1920s, 30s, and 40s, and are now in poor repair. Okay, just talk about your guys' house. He's right here. The roughly 300 units are valued at approximately $35,000 each, and several landlords own 60 or, six, six or more units. Due to age and value, the units as a whole are not, not well-maintained. Those attending the SWAT analysis, which was another input that we gave input to, and they made, they made a decision based on our, our input, or at least our perceived input. Those attending the SWAT analysis who gave input, which 73% didn't, announced occurred that this area, this area would be best served by demolition and redevelopment. Okay? What else can that mean? The mayor on the night of, I think it was the 19th, that's my birthday, June 19th, called me a liar, called the purveyor of the, of the literature a liar, called us, the banner called us absurd. Greg Thomas called us crazy. And other people, I'm not even going to discuss what they called me.
As a quick question, you sure can't order through what you just read, that said that those apartments were roughly valued at about $35,000.
Yes, sir.
What are they praising, though, that's for tax purposes? I'm sure probably twice.
Well, that goes into the next seven. I mean, and that, and that could be another day. The flyer, if you'll notice, and that, and that's a very good question, the flyer goes into ways that they can develop your, your homes, and once they, it becomes blighted, and, and it's already been determined a brown field, which means it can be redeveloped with other things around it, to put it simply, that's what it means. Tax incrementing financing, HB 1554, that State Representative Brooks brought to our community and was so proud of, pushed this TIF financing. Basically, in a nutshell, what it does is it redirects your sales, and, and I think someone said, Ed, correct me, sales and property taxes, that?
Property taxes.
Yeah. Just the property taxes.
California, because it's been identified as one of the main reasons their cities have been.
Right. And, and we were, we were given a lot of flack about, look at, look at California, that's where we're headed. California's not in the best position right now, and we're doing exactly what they're doing 20 years later. They use TIF financing. TIF financing was outlawed or made not a law in California, so they don't even use it anymore. So it's outdated, but we're thinking it's brand new and a great way to finance our downtown area.
TIF financing was developed in California. They developed it, they started it. TIF was developed, it was given birth in California. 20 years later, it has depleted the State of California's general fund to the bankruptcy redevelopment, using TIF to do that. What happens is, when they go in and they develop an area, say the tax revenue at that time is $1,000 a year, well, it's frozen at that level, and over the course of time, if the tax revenue increases, rather than that money going to your general fund, it goes to the redevelopment agencies. And after 20 years, California finally figured it out that these development agencies were robbing the state blind, because they're taking money, tax revenue, from your general fund, which you normally would go to pay for police and whatever, and less than a year ago, they shut down 400 redevelopment agencies in California. Took them 20 years to catch on. So let's learn lessons that other states have already learned.
Thank you, Karen. And one other, one other thing, and I'm, I'm winding this up down, and we'll let Karen speak for a minute, and Dan will just, and we'll leave up questions, okay? I was asked, I said, okay, then I was told that that was not the original plan, that was not the latest plan, that was six days later. Instead of the mayor telling me on the 19th that, oh, that plan's been updated, and it's been changed, he waited for six days and gathered some information, and said that that information has been changed, and Greg Thomas confirmed that. Waiting six days to change something that's not being exposed to the public, we had all that time, we still got that same information on 300 homes. Okay? They tell us that, so I went and I asked, I said, Greg, Corey, give me the latest plan. So they handed the latest plan, had the same date on it, 3/8, and that's what this is here, but it's been worded differently. We did do some discovery, and I think Karen touched on it, you know, I, I mentioned that maybe some behind the door, somewhere privately, somebody was doing something, but more than likely, it was put out in public. When we looked at it on 5/29, there may have been some city council minutes or something.
There was a city council meeting on 5/29, and we were told that the change took place May 31st, because that's our assumption.
Right.
That the city council meeting, trusting the words that we were told, that the city council meeting changed it then, and it was changed officially on the 31st of May, but we don't have any of that.
And the minutes were not, minutes were not there.
We had the minutes, we had to be able to find the minutes.
So I'm hoping maybe one of these guys here will give us some of that information tonight. But regardless, at the time that we gave the information out, the time we got called liar, the time we got called absurd, crazy, whatever else named, the only information we had was the latest public output from planners and from the community developers and from McDelbride and Claryon Consultants. That's all the information we had. If there was some information elsewhere, we weren't made tribute to it, the local press did not cover it and announce it, because it's a total change from what we gave out a week prior. Okay? Now, the version is, well, at least the latest version that I've got, listen to this, it sounds much lovelier and makes you feel very secure in your home. An area of particular concern to the central area, same page, same area, paragraph, just the paragraph wording's been changed, and then one below. An area of particular concern to the central area, small subcommittee, consists of several blocks of postage-stamped lots, sounds familiar. They described them this time, generally 50 by 150 feet, located directly south of the World Blue complex. The area consists of small workforce housing on narrow lots built during the 1920s, 30s, and 40s. According to the property tax records, the roughly 300 units are valued at approximately $35,000 each, and records indicate that several landlords own six or more units. Sounds pretty familiar there, right? Let's, let's make sense. Records also indicate that several homes have been passed from generation to generation and have been well-maintained. Not well-maintained was the other, that was just a couple weeks prior. But as a whole, most of the housing in stock is in need of minor repair and major, minor or major repairs. Amazing what, what happens when the case gets put out in the public. Okay? Guys, you're here tonight.
I want to thank you for the flyer. It did not come to my home, it came to one of my neighbors, and I was fixing to take a nap, when I talked to this neighbor on the phone, and I got, I was so upset, I put my clothes back on, went to her house, got the flyer, got some coffees, and started giving them out to other people, because I didn't get one, and knew nothing about even meetings anywhere previously. So all the neighbors I've talked to knew nothing about any meetings, were very upset, extremely upset, and couldn't believe our government, local government, would do us this way. And so it was the first inkling that we had of any meeting on this, on our area, period. Had we have known of any other meetings, we would have attended, if at all possible.
True. And I appreciate that comment, and I think that's the sentiment of most of the people in the county. Although they're, they're saying that, you know, maybe, you know, they put a paragraph, you know, two letters and two sentences in the, in the newspaper, I mean, I don't know what the, I don't know what the publication circulation every day is, but it don't reach at 100,000 people. A lot of people didn't know about it. The thing is, and this is my assessment, this is not me speaking on behalf of anybody, but my assessment, my assessment of the situation is that if you don't know, then you don't have it. Okay?
That's right. Many people walk in that area, up and down the street all the time, don't even have cars. So they don't, a lot of people don't get the newspaper, and how else are they going to find out?
I mean, I consider myself a very well-versed person in things that are going on in the town. I had extreme difficulty, and Dan and I got called some mornings, 30 minutes prior to a meeting, that these meetings were being done. They did send out, our next one is, unless this is changed, August 16th and 17th, and it'll be location to be announced.
Where are they supposed to announce?
I don't know. Being classifieds like the other ones were, when they said it was going to be a publicly announced meeting, there was an ad in the classified that was about two and a half inches long by one inch tall, and the reason I found out about it is because somebody called me. A couple of these meetings, I just happened to be on an email list of a person that they had put into a position to be what they alleged to be a public advocate, which what they do is they take the people that they perceive to be a problem, they invite you into the situation, so now you become part of the system. I happened to get an email from that person, not, them not knowing that I was in opposition to this, and so within 30 minutes, Karen and Donnie and I showed up at a meeting, which I would say that we were probably less than welcome. We got the police call.
And it was also 9:00 in the morning, where people were working.
I would like, I'd like to say something, though, you know, Mr. Estes is the only, you could see how the city council thanked him, okay? He is the only gentleman that showed up. You know, he didn't show up, and I'm sure he'll have a good excuse. Paul did show up, he's with the planners' office, and we talked today, and these guys got guts, because they showed up, and they're vastly outnumbered, but I think that, you know, I think we should address some questions to them, maybe they can help us try to understand what went on, or, you know, at least give their side of the situation, because I think we need to hear all sides. I mean, that's, we're not here to beat somebody down because, you know, because, because we're in a position right now that we can do that. What we want, we want explanation, we want full disclosure on everything, and we've asked for the papers to get full disclosure. We've been trying to get full disclosure for a period of time now. I have to say, Paul's been cooperative. I'm, first time I've ever met Mr. Estes, it's, I don't, you know, I don't know, he might have lived in the county. But, but we want disclosure, we want meetings that are open, we want to know in advance. You people have the right to know in advance. This stuff doesn't need to be in the classifieds when you're having a meeting. This stuff needs to be on the front page. It makes me believe, and this is Dan Roll's personal opinion, they don't want you there, because your opposition will step into the way of what they have planned, you know? I'm not saying that all their plans are necessarily bad, but what I'm saying is, let's discuss this. I want discussion, I want open discussion on every aspect of this, because, you know, what I'm tired of, is I'm tired of, it always seems like the people with the money always come out on top, and everybody else is the people that gets stepped on, and that comes to an end. We should have open meeting discussions, everything should be out in the open, and everyone in this room has a right. If you don't show up, shame on you. If they don't tell you about it, shame on them. Karen, you have to add something real quick, and then, and then we'll.
All I wanted to say was, you know, the proof that they really do not want your opinion is from the, is from the third day of the charrette, when they refused to share the results because they were too negative, because it's like, let's just keep playing innings of a baseball game until the team I want wins, you know? And, and because the people that did show up at that end did not like what they had to say, they decided that it was sabotage, they did, they said it was sabotage, and they were not going to share those results because they were too negative. So, but if all those people that showed up said that this was a wonderful plan, oh, we loved it, I'll bet you people would have heard, it would have been on the front page of the paper, how everybody loved their plan.
You had mentioned, or this standard development statement, it's a United Nations plan, why these people love that project. Change the commerce, sold itself to the United Nations, and my first page, this law of sea treaty, they were supporting the law of sea treaty, several other things, United Nations, it just rocked my soul, they do.
Is there, okay, is there anyone from the South End that, that has some questions that possibly? Paul, would you like to come, come up here and answer the questions, so I can give you the microphone? This is your baby.
How about the Holland farm, if you ever make things straight out? Put all them thousands, thousands of dollars of fire in, and it's going to burn out?
Give me just a second here, guys, and I'm going to, we're going to turn this over now to questioning and answering, and, and if you will, Mr. Bill Estes and Paul Porter are going to take your answers, take your questions, okay? Please remain civil, nobody wants to listen to somebody yelling, cursing, and calling names, because we're not about that, okay? Yeah. And before, before we take questions, Bill wants, Bill wants to say something, kind of, in comparison to what we had to say, and I really do appreciate Bill being here, Paul coming tonight. Again, this is not the, the most, appearance-wise, not the most friendly place, but basically is more friendly than most places I've been recently. So I'm going to allow Bill to give us his information, and then you guys will open up questions, and Dan will be around to hand you the microphone. Thank y'all very much. Thank you for being here. I appreciate the invitation to be here, and I know quite a few of you who don't mind this, Bill Estes, I teach at Lee University. I'm sorry, my name is Bill Estes, I teach at Lee University, right over here, I live on 8th Street, I represent the 2nd District, this is my sixth year on the city council, I probably don't have, have the room here tonight. Let me just give some background, and it's funny, it's so important, the minutes of the city council, because I really appreciated Donnie reading the minutes, saying, Bill said, you know, he hoped something good can come of this, because I really, that was my hope, and I wish you could see the video. I'm sorry. Okay. You know, and I, I appreciate that. I am not speaking here for the mayor, I am not here speaking for the council, I'm only speaking for myself. So anything you hear tonight is from me and not from anyone else, and I'm not speaking for the city. In fact, it's funny, I, I spotted Paul here, because sometimes planning doesn't agree with the council, in fact, oftentimes. So, you know, we have these agreements even in-house, so I understand that, and we talk, and we talk a lot. A couple of things I just want to put some context to, and I, I so, and I'm sure Paul as well, wants to answer any questions before we leave here tonight, I want to answer every Well, I can start at the back, Barbara, you asked a question about where does the city decide to go from now? And so, to take that back even farther...
And so, to take that back even farther, there's really two plans at play here. There's the 2035, all of Bradley County, okay? And I was hoping that tonight, we're really going to focus on the south city, the south central city, the central areas we're talking about tonight, and that's the part that I represent, okay? But there's the 2035, and then there is the, the Whirlpool area called the Brownville or Brownfield redevelopment that will come. The, it's great that, you know, the consultants from South Carolina, if I could just give you a timeline, I really appreciate Doug Barry and what he said yesterday publicly, and I'm going to comment on that. There's a, there's a group of consultants from South Carolina, McBride, Dale, and Clarion, who were hired to do this. They came, they did the SWOT analysis, I was there. Mr. McBride owns this from South Carolina, he always comes over from South Carolina, Columbia, so I always consider him from there. They did the SWOT analysis, they started on this package. When they take, and they meet with the chamber, they meet with community leaders, they meet with Whirlpool, they go back and write a draft, which they brought to a charrette. I never in my life thought I'd be talking about a French word, a French word. You know, charity, it's where artisans and artists come together, they show all their work, and they all walk around, they look at each other, they turn their heads up, and then they go home. That's, you know, so, you go to, you go to the mall, and I was at the mall that week, you know, and, and so, everybody showing their ideas, and that's what it is, it's ideas. Nothing's been adopted by the county, Ed, I saw Ed here, is he here? Ed Elkins?
He left.
He left?
Yeah.
Nothing's been adopted by the county, nothing's been adopted by the city. They're putting the plan together, this was their idea. The first thing we said, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, when we saw that initial document that you filled out, is, and everything, I don't think I can say anything more important than this, Cleveland has never, and correct me if I'm wrong, used eminent domain as, as a tool for development. Paul, I'm wrong, yeah, if you could give me an example, I've been, I've been paying attention for eight...
Ed Elkins spoke at a meeting recently.
Yeah, tell me where, and I'll...
Okay, it's over there near, I'm not...
That's fine.
But it's near Baby Hardware and there, Lee Street, Lee, because I have a, I'm going to...
Was it for the detention ponds?
No.
I don't know about that.
It was for the, what she's speaking of, she's addressing, is that they took and built public housing, and took the property, including...
How many years ago?
I think it was in the forties, but I'm not sure.
Okay, okay, and I stand corrected. They may have used it in the forties, since I've been paying attention, Cleveland has never, it never has a history, so when, when the idea of eminent domain comes forward, and Paul can tell you this, if community development brings that up, if planners bring that up, it gets nixed right away. It gets nixed right away. There's...
Really? They will have, this aunt was moved out of the city, she never had a car, she always walked, and she, her property, her garden, her family home was taken, and she ended out, ended up out near Patterson Road or Dockery, I forgot the location, but several miles out, and she didn't like that, she went down and protested, and they said, "No, this is for better good."
Okay. I can't speak, I was born in sixty-seven, I was born in sixty-seven.
The fact is, it has happened.
Yeah, okay, it has happened in Cleveland, I stand corrected, and that was actually in Cleveland city limits, in the forties.
And it's still a TCA code that's...
Sure, and it's a code that can be used, that Cleveland really has no current...
Especially in Brownfield development.
Cleveland has no history of that. The Brownfield, I saw when the main number-one goal of Cleveland City Council for the last three years has been keeping Whirlpool in town. First of all, it was that they wouldn't move to Oxford, Mississippi, when they combined, and they brought Oxford here, and the second was that they wouldn't move this factory to Mexico or anywhere else in the United States. Whirlpool says, Doug said, I appreciate Doug, I wasn't, I would never say this publicly, but since Doug brought it up yesterday, it's something that can be said, Whirlpool needed two half-million-square-foot assembly lines, and they needed them linear, they need them linear, they don't need, like piecemeals, like the east plant, the west plant, the plant one, plant two, and plant three, which is closed at the end of King Edward, they needed linear, and they needed ingress, egress, they needed to get their trucks in, and materials in, and their trucks happen, because they don't use the train tracks. So, when they were looking for linear feet for two half-million-square-foot buildings, and you know what they built? They built a one-million-square-foot building, and now they're finishing up a four-hundred-thousand square-foot warehouse. They were wanting to stay, their number-one thing, we want to stay in the neighborhood, we want to stay close. Why they have warehouses there, plus there's an overabundance of warehouses in Cleveland right now, so it's not like they had to have their own. Their main thing was a new line, because they're making new ranges, ranges differently, and they needed new equipment, new line, they needed efficiency. The first place they said that they want to stay close, Doug Barry said in the paper yesterday at Main Street, and I was there, and I was shocked when I heard him say it, and it wasn't three hundred homes, it was three hundred and thirty homes that are on the, let me consider it, the west side of the train tracks between plant three and what I call the west plant, some people call it plant two, I think. And so, they, and we told Doug, Doug told them, Cleveland has no history of eminent domain, and, no, the nineteen forty's, I'm sorry, no recent history of eminent domain, and it doesn't have the political will to pull that off. So, we started looking for land, that's been our number-one priority, is to keep Whirlpool here. And so, it was never, it was never that direction. How did, and, and, and this is me speaking, okay, Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I did my own paper trail when all this came out, and I've been dealing, not with Paul, but I've been dealing with Greg, and I got the same documents, I think, that Donnie and Dan maybe, or that I know that Donnie and Dan brought up tonight. The consultants bring a plan, they bring it to the mall, a white paper draft, that's what we see. They present it to planning, we still don't get it, the city council does not get this until planning has put it together, then brings it to us as a, as a, hey, here's where we're going. They opened it up to the public, I'm sure, you know, I know what they, they heard at the mall, okay? I know that. They bring, they haven't even brought us, they make changes, okay? Never did we think, not the most, never did I think, I can only speak for myself, that the city was going to use eminent domain, that this was part of the Brownville, the Brownfield, or the redevelopment. The three hundred and thirty initially was all about Whirlpool and not about what to do with Whirlpool after the fact, because at the time, we were wanting them to stay downtown, we started, Trump, most importantly, wanted to stay in Cleveland. So, I think, you know, you can see how, do things reach the city council or not. Again, I, I think, I've said enough, but it's more important that I answer your questions. You can correct me if I said anything wrong, please do, or if you have something to add.
And, and real quickly, and I want to ask you this question, and I've wanted to ask you for quite a while, if, if you guys didn't know about the plan, why were you so sure of what, why were you so sure and accurate of what we were putting out was false?
All right.
And why did the mayor react so strongly?
I'm not going to speak for the mayor.
You got it. Your vote's seven to zero.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought the minutes, because that actually gives credence to what I'm about to say, okay? I don't know if Paul was there that day in the meeting.
Because we, we probably said, I don't think the mayor knew what was in the plan, and that's why he made the statement that he made, because it was shocking to him, he didn't know what the draft said, but he was willing to condemn whoever was putting out information, which actually happened to be what was the last information that we got.
Right, the last, and so, when I saw what was in the flyer, which is, I have the, I guess, salmon piece of paper here, right here, when I saw what was in this flyer, I knew it, I believed it wrong in the form of my being, you know, I believe these things are wrong in the form of my being, and as, as members of the city council, I would not vote for these things to take place. I cannot speak for my colleagues, for these things to take place in the areas you're talking about, this area, any area, you know, using eminent domain. We actually, I take that back, we threatened eminent domain for one little section of a turn at a gas station last year with a gentleman, and we said, you know, we're going to off you this, so let me backtrack a little bit, I remember us threatening it, but the state was going to come and take it over anyway, so it just, it was making the process a little faster. The city would not do this. So, when the mayor said what he said, and I'm not speaking for that, and we voted what? To investigate if any laws were broken, where they put in mailboxes, is this, you know, inflammatory, those kinds of things, that's what the resolution was. It's not to, I don't think, to intimidate or to shut up. My point was, I hesitated to vote for it, and I said at the vote, I said, you know, I really hope something good can come of this, that the right information can get out, because I can't speak what the mayor knew, but I knew this was not right. And I knew that, at the heart of this issue, what started with Whirlpool. And I also knew that there was a draft from, now, there's two consulting groups, McBride, Dale, Clarion, and then the something, something Russell, and Knoxville, who actually is working for the Clarion group, Mr. McBride, did I say that right?
And he's worked on many other projects with foundation.
We, I knew that theirs was a draft, I knew that our planning group had to have, our planning staff had to have it, and that it had to go to the planning commission before it would ever get to us. So, there would be public hearings in planning, there would be public hearings in the community, it's way ahead of the, you know, it's, the cart is well in front of the horse right now. That's the best answer I can give, you know, I...
So, you're acknowledging that the information that we put out at the time...
I disagree with it. Well, maybe, for what you knew...
And for what was placed...
For what you knew, maybe you did, you know, I, I didn't interpret it the same way.
But, I mean, the paper is right there, I mean, that is what was getting out, it said right in there clearly what was in the draft plan, the thought process, whether this was...
Yeah, you know what, consultants come in, and that's what consultants do, they're about redevelopment, they're about big plans, and then they say, "Let's, let's make it for you."
You almost said this, almost said this very friendly.
I'll take it friendly.
And, and I'm going to say it directly, but if these guys are putting out a draft plan, I think you guys should know about it. And if they're putting it out into the public, and you represent the public, and then you scold the public with a seven to zero vote, looking to investigate exposed, but its information has been passed down, I think you guys should be included in the process along the way, instead of ten years down the, we've got this final plan, but the plan that was put out, the draft plan that was put out, I guarantee you, and I, well, this is my opinion, if nothing had been said, that plan would still be in it, because they said they made the changes because too many people thought it was negative.
I don't think the eminent domain part would be there, and I'll say this, just as Dan said, just as Dan said, just as Dan said, if you don't get involved, shame on you. I go to SWOT meetings, I go to the community meetings when, when they were here in the library, when the consultants were here initially, the first two visits, and there was tension here, you know, but I was here, I was a part of that. I think Ed was here, if I remember right, I can remember the players that were here, both planning departments were here. Now, I can't speak for everybody else on being involved, our planning staff gives us everything along the way, anything we ask, we get, and it's, if we have monthly reports, we have packets, I wish you do, how much I read a month, that the city gives me to try to stay up on what the city's doing, that's the only response I can have, so...
All right, so the plan, you don't know about the plan, and it kind of lacked on you, as you should have, but we didn't, I really didn't. But I've been opposed to this plan of these people, really, Cleveland can make their own plans, we've got commissioners, we've got people all around, we don't need this much from out of town. And I asked from the first day, "Why do we need you?" Well, I never got an answer, because they say they're coming to us, and we will kind of make the plans, why are we paying them? And then you don't even know nothing about the plan, so what good are they?
Right, in my defense, I do know about the plan, but I know there's a process, and I followed it all the way along, and I followed it all the way along, and I'll answer your question.
Do we continue to pay them, can't we fire them?
We could, let me, I think this will be interesting to all of you. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, having these consultants, they are helping us put together a grant application for quarter of a million dollars. We can't do anything to Whirlpool without testing the soil, without seeing what's there, what can and can't be developed. The EPA will not let us do anything, clean it up, or move a piece of it, until we know what's underground. These consultants are specialized in helping us get federal dollars to do this, so that we don't have to tax local people.
But we are being taxed because of this plan.
That's a whole different issue.
And really, gentlemen, this is a brand building, don't be beginning to go forward with or without a finding of the soil being contaminated.
It depends, it depends on the level of contamination. Let me, sorry.
That's, that's...
Hey, I've got one question, make your debate.
Yes, sir. I agree with what she's saying, we're bringing in consultants, okay, these consultants are familiar with the process, but they're not familiar with our country here, us in the county, they're not familiar with the Appalachian Valley. They don't know what's been here, how our families grew up here, and what we expect here for ourselves and our future generations. They're just coming in with their ideas on what they think is good for us, and then trying to tell us, this is what's good for us. And we're relying on our city council and our other governmental officials to stand up for our rights and protect us and our families and our history here, but we're being led down, we're being led down the wrong path. The sampling that they took up here in the mall, of which, be it down here on the south side of town, isn't even relevant. The people that use the mall on the north end of town are the northern end of town people, so...
Even not the northern end of town. Whole county town people.
And they're sort of a different class of people than the people that actually live in this area on the south end of town. So, that sampling is moot point.
So, a couple of comments, one, they are outsiders, they need to get to know the community, what they do, they hold community forums, but then it goes through our planning development, it goes through the county's planning development, it goes through the planning commissions, both planning commissions before it ever reaches our level. So, it should be vetted by locals at many levels before it ever is voted on or enacted, and this is part of the process, even tonight is part of that process.
And, and part of it is, there's not enough input from the people that are actually involved. The people on the north side of the school, up at that end of town, it's not, they're not going to Brownfield and replant their houses, it's the house of other people that live on the south side. Why couldn't they come to the community center there by Bishop Baker and took a sampling of people happy, instead of doing it at the mall, which is sort of a joke anyway, they all know...
I'm going to say something, answer the second question you asked, real quick, and I, and I don't think I'll get many people to agree with me. When you say the elected officials should be representing you and protecting your rights, all right, I'm only speaking as Bill, but when our planning department reads what they give us, reads what's given to them, and they make changes, they are protecting, they say, "No, this is not what we do, eminent domain is not what we do, it's not how we do things." When they hold hearings, and they come tonight, they are listening, they are protecting them. Other people don't see it that way, I see it that way, I see these guys as professionals who work for you.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, except that I only see two people here from the city government that are willing to listen to us, you and Paul, and we appreciate you all coming to the meeting.
Yeah, let me, the first thing I want to say is, I want you guys to keep keeping us accountable, I just want you guys, you guys are doing fine, we want you to keep us accountable, I think Bill would say the same thing, he wants your input, so, that's the first thing I want to say. Second thing is, we're, we're talking past each other, because it's clear in this sheet of paper what this is not. This is a central city area plan, so that's what we're working on, is a plan, and then there's a dash, so that's the plan, it hasn't been written yet, and then we're looking at themes, white papers, for draft polls and recommendations. This white paper is not a plan. This white paper is a summation from the consultants of what you guys have told us, and what Donnie is, is criticizing us for, is presenting to the public what has been said in a committee meeting for the central city area. So, I think, I think it's our responsibility to give you that information. So, when the consultants came to the charrette, that's a French word, just, you know, they gave us what they had found, what they had heard, I don't know, I wasn't in the meeting, I don't know who said the three hundred homes, although Doug Barry seemed to know about it, and we presented, and the reaction from you is justified, but before we got any reaction from you, and Donnie has said that this...
But before we got any reaction from you, and Donnie had said that this would be the plan, whether, if, if, that you guys didn't speak up, before any of that happened, I told the consultant, when he had this area, your area, these three hundred houses on this map, um, actually, let me, let me clarify, the three hundred houses were not located. I told Cory how to make this map. Donnie's, listen, I, I get frustrated with Donnie a little bit, he's, we, we have a okay relationships on that, but.
It's a loving relationship.
I try to talk to him every time he comes, but, but, I would, I try to make a list of things that I have to correct, but he was saying that we had a map of the three hundred homes in which, uh.
I asked for the map, and that's what people did.
That's right, that's right. And at the top, I gave, I told Cory what to do with that. And at the top, I made sure that he said the area referenced in the misleading flyer, because I'm not mapping any three hundred homes. I'm mapping what at the top of this flyer it said, which was Eighteenth Street, King Enworth Avenue, Wildwood. This map is a map of this. I mean, this, this map is a map of what the flyer said at the top. So, so the information on that map is from the flyer, not from the plan, not from the, the, the white paper. Now, the white paper is a summation of what has been said. Somebody at a person who said, houses need to be demolished and redeveloped. I'm not going to say that wasn't said, but as soon as we saw that this area down here, and I didn't associate it with this, but the area that we're talking about, I saw on a map, it says redevelopment area, I told the consultants before, in the charrette, before any of this blew up, I said, we are not redeveloping that area, it is infill. We are going to let landowners, private landowners, develop it themselves. And we did that before this, before anybody told us that there was a problem down there. And, you know, I, I mean, that's just the way it is. So anyway, I just wanted to point out, if we haven't done a plan, we update the white paper based on your comments. So it has been updated. It doesn't go to Bill Estes to get updated. When we hear comments from the neighborhood that there's a problem, or we see it, there was a problem, and we were working on it before the city council ever said anything, we were going back and forth with citizens, and we've been working on it. And we had a meeting with Karen and Dan, and they said there were some problems, which, which Donnie pointed out. The one draft says, will maintain, which says not will maintain. That's a problem. We don't like that. Point it out, we're going to update the white paper. And we're going, you know, if anybody wants to see the latest version, we can, you know, we can provide it. But it is a working documents, you know, if you're in an office, you've worked on documents, it's not the final thing. So it's not a plan, it's what we're working on. I think, I think that you guys want us to present what we have, and if somebody said it, we're gonna put it in there, because, and we're not going to edit it. You know, edit out the bad stuff. We're going to let you see it, and then when we see the, see that there's a problem, we're going to say, let's not do it. And that's where we're at.
Hey, guys, does everybody hear me? I don't need that mic. This all began in the late eighties, right? Keeping Maytag, where they were, you're at. I'm just trying to catch up here.
Much of it.
Much of it. Say ninety percent of it.
Since, since Whirlpool moved out, and it has, it has changed the discussion.
Well, the discussion is, is our local government, not these consultants anymore. All that consulting stuff came from trying to keep Maytag right where they were at, right?
No, that was just one of the options. Whirlpool, as Mr. Barry said, as Mr. Barry said, if Whirlpool wanted to stay, that was when they're, they wanted to stay in the neighborhood.
Right.
And when.
Well, that's over.
That's over. We're fortunate, they're still in town. We're ecstatic, they are still in town.
Couldn't make it without them. So why is all this still going on there in Brownfield? This is where I live, this is my concern, not twenty thirty five. Why are we still struggling with our lives here? I mean, do I go, do I not go, do I fix, do I not fix, are you gonna take it, are you not gonna take it? No, if you put this six thousand dollar roof on, and you're gonna take my stuff, not get anything back, are you gonna make yourself, what is the deal? I mean.
Right, the city, the city's not gonna take your land or your home.
Do we fix it, or do we move it?
Our home, our home.
One inch of town.
Okay, I cannot give you that, I cannot answer that tonight. I can say this, I can say this.
Some live there, we work at Whirlpool.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Sir, I understand. Let me, let me try to explain. I am one person on the city council. I cannot speak for the city and make definitive statements.
Why don't they have a meeting with everybody and a reasonable argument? Wait for you to show up.
We can request that.
No, we need to demand it.
Wait, maybe that, you demand, that's what makes people.
You can demand, I can request, you can demand.
Using your constituents.
Yeah, I, I.
Maybe somebody on the city council has a personal agenda to take my property.
Ask for it, let me, and, and let me say.
What are they doing on?
And I'm gonna speak to my hopes to, to go with both of your questions. A positive infill, a positive brownfield, a park, some development, some businesses would do more to your property value than anything else.
You are correct.
And that's what needs to be done there. And it takes planning, and it takes money, and it takes developers to do that. And the city staff has to work with both government and non-government sources to do that.
That's how can development not cease?
Another question?
No questions.
There's all kinds of questions, I don't know who to ask. I'm not in charge of the meeting, I'm just answering questions.
I just want to say something, I, I think that it's, it's, there's a bit of confusion between, I think there's a bit of confusion between the, your elected officials, your planner, and the consultants. I truly believe that your planners and your elected officials have your interests at heart. I really do. And they're not perfect, but I really do. The problem that I see is with the consultants. They have a totally different agenda, trying to explain that and convince our planners and our elected officials of that is a very difficult task. But the consultants have a totally different objective than these people here, whether they want to admit it or not, they do. They've been doing this in cities and counties in every state across America. McBride, Dale, and Clarion are one of the biggest. So the problem is with the consultants and what is their agenda, what is their plan, that they want to see for this community and every other community that they go into. Understand that planners today have been trained in universities by a program that was created by the American Planning Association. Back in the Clinton Boar administration, they were given five million dollars to create a training plan to be implemented in every American university to promote, and I can prove this, to promote Agenda Twenty One. And they were told, and, and they don't call it Agenda Twenty One, and these people that go through college, and they, they have been taught, they did, it took them six years to create this plan. I have this book, it's two volumes, it weighs eleven pounds. It took them six years to create this training program that was put into all of our universities, and planners who went to college, this is what they were taught. And President Clinton and Vice President Al Moore from Tennessee, God forbid, um, promoted Agenda Twenty One through the President's Council on Sustainable Development, and in the introduction of that, it said that the PCSD was created to promote United Nations Agenda Twenty One. There is proof all over the place, and they've made a concerted effort since nineteen ninety two to change the language, presented the policies of Agenda Twenty One by using comprehensive planning, smart growth, they changed the words to make it all soft and, you know, warm and fuzzy. The underlying fact is, I don't even know if Dale McBride, Dale and Clarion are aware that they're implementing Agenda Twenty One. But personally, I believe they are, but I've done a lot of research, and I think one of the things that we need to do is we need to have another meeting, and we need to be able to present to you this information, so that you know what's behind these, these consultants. Do we need consultants coming in and telling us how, how we are to live, how much water we can, we can use, how much electricity we can use, how many bike paths do we need to have, um, you know, when does bike paths become, stop being recreation and become transportation?
Tell them how much the consultants cost.
And who pays? Over five hundred thousand dollars so far. The BCC twenty thirty five, the BCC twenty thirty five strategic plan was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then we, we're now working on the BCC twenty thirty five comprehensive plan, and that's gonna be another, it's over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. She thought it was about two sixty five. So you've got over a half a million dollars already invested in, um, plans that aren't even complete. And on top of that, you have a regional plan that's coming down the road, that's gonna be sixteen counties, three states, Tennessee, Alabama, and Jersey, I mean, Georgia. It is the first time that they've had a regional plan go across state lines, and that should be of a big concern to people. Why are they taking a comprehensive plan across state lines? So you got your city plan, you got your county plan, and now you have your regional plan that's gonna go across the states. Yes.
Is there, is there anybody else from the, the, the area that we're talking about? Does anyone else have a question, uh, that's from the south side area over there about what's going on, what your property is? Is there, is there, have you, okay.
Well, I want to mention three things. The consultants, uh, why shouldn't we have, uh, town, why shouldn't we have town hall meetings and, uh, and why shouldn't we have town hall, have town hall meetings and, um, the council tell us what they want to do before consultants are involved ever? They're, they're doing it backwards. It should be the people first, the people that live there and they own property there.
Or why can't we have consultants from our own area that are familiar enough?
Right, there's gonna be some.
I really, I really appreciate what Dennis Collins said in the paper. Many of you know Dennis, uh, from the, the credit union. He's right, he's the one that should be on, he's someone from the neighborhood, no doubt, no doubt.
Let me mention two other things while I have this mic. It is totally ridiculous, more than ridiculous, to have a three day meeting that nobody in the area knows anything about at the Bradley Square Mall. I, I'm telling you, lots of these people don't even have cars, we're poor people basically in that area.
And there's nobody in that part of the mall.
And people walk the streets day and night. And, uh, they're the people affected most by this, and they have a right to know. The meetings should be held closer to the area. Definitely not any further than the courthouse, but even closer. Why couldn't it be at churches in the area?
Yeah.
Why couldn't it be?
Or the South Cleveland Community Center.
Or the Blasberg School.
That may be convenient. A location, even if it was outside, we'd come, uh, people could, closer. There are many disabled people. And, um, I, I hope to never hear of a, a ridiculous thing of a three day meeting on the other end of town. I go to the mall about once or twice a year.
The fact that they, the fact that they discounted the feedback from the people that did go answers your question.
Nobody I talk to, and I talk to, I cover as many people as I could.
They don't want your input, that's the bottom line.
I really don't want to hear any strangers, uh, in the area. I, I drove my car out, talked to people, took pay notes.
Let's allow them to have an opportunity to answer that question, if you, is that?
And the council meetings, they're not, we don't know when they are. We need more public notice, not the bottom of the paper, there needs to be in the paper, like you said, the front page, and other news outlets too, where people that live there will find out about it before it, all over.
So, so let me kind of summarize what you're saying here, that you're saying that basically that, and this is, but my argument from the very beginning is that these meetings are not advertised, these meetings are not made known. Why, I'm not, I've already given my opinion why, because I don't believe that they really want that. I could be wrong, but that's my personal opinion. But, you know, without public input, what you're saying, and then having these meetings that affect your community and put them on the other side of town, with you and people in that community at, at a disadvantaged position.
And somebody that nobody knew anything about it until the flyer came out.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and all the people I talk to knew nothing about it until then. We thank you from the bottom of our heart.
Yes, ma'am. The, the twenty thirty five is for all of Bradley County. The mall is a central place to put that together. We want, and I just, I just, uh, ask Greg, I'm sorry, I said fall, sorry, I know, I don't, no, it's not, no, it's not. Uh, I just said fall. We can put together early fall, let's say September, early September, a meeting in Blightsville. Now, if we can get, if we can get one of the Knoxville consultants to come down as well, our planning staff, have the county, we can easily do that, and we're happy to do that and put that together. You know, I know that the mall event, the charrette was advertised on TV, radio, and as for the city council time, I can't help you on that, I'm sorry.
I had one channel on my TV, one channel, no news.
You're probably better off than the rest of us.
And I don't have a computer. And I'm, I know I'm not the only one over there.
I have been to those, um, BCC twenty thirty five meetings. We told them we didn't want them here, they ignored us.
Yes, yes.
Period.
Cut the drive.
Right.
There's also something else that bothers me. I've been to all of the BCC meetings too. And the one that was addressed in the two twenty five Keith, uh, newsletter in April, that was the one that we had at the museum. And then we had the follow-up early in the morning here in this room. Each one was orchestrated around a round table, a separate round tables, and you had leaders, facilitators at each, at each one. I refer to them as, um, timeshare closing brokers. What prob, what, what is problematic to me is that the first meeting of BCC twenty one, the language and the total agenda and the written material was in one language, using a certain set of words and phrases and pictures and logos. Because of some of the questions asked at that meeting that became a little bit of an irritant that we never got any answer from, when we went to the second meeting that was held here, and we were given the white paper, I congratulated them for sanitizing everything that was in the previous meeting. And by that I mean, the phraseology, the words, the logos, the pictures, the graphs, it was gone. It had all been rewritten, and the one gentleman who was a visiting facilitator, who now I know is from the group in Knoxville, he told me, we wrote it so you could understand it. I have a little problem with that, I understood it the first time. But they never answered my question. What I'm getting to, I don't have any confidence in McDale, McBride, whoever else is in this. I like to deal with someone that I can get in their face with, or I can have access to, and we can sit down and we can try to solve it at a local level. I do not want to pay a half a million dollars to someone who can give me no guarantees. They get their money, we don't have anything. What if we don't have all these people come in twenty thirty five? We're gonna have empty bike paths, and whatever else we're gonna have.
They have no public trust.
Okay, one of, one of the things I'd like y'all to do, is if you do have a computer, look up Wikipedia, whatever the definition of charrette. One of the reasons, if you look in Wikipedia, you don't have a computer, a charrette is something, is a technique that's used to diffuse opposition between planners and the public. Says it right in Wikipedia. So this is what they do, is they go to these meetings like we had here at nine o'clock in the morning, and because Donnie, Dan, and I were there, and we stood on. in the morning, and because Donnie, Dan, and I were there, and we stood up and questioned, they realized that they have some opposition here in this town. So what they do is they constantly, like they change their words, they change their techniques. So what they did was, in my opinion, they put the charrette together, because if you were there and you saw what happened with the charrette, there's very little, there is really no chance for any vocal opposition. You walk in the door, you go around, you look at all the pretty pictures, you fill out some surveys, you might talk a little bit to Mr. Dale, and then you leave. That's what, that's what happened at the charrette. And that's why they put the charrette together, because then that way you could come in, you could fill out your little survey, and you could leave. And there's no opposition whatsoever. So again, I ask you, look that word up. You don't have to take my word for it. That's what Wikipedia says. I'm not that they're the experts, but a lot of people are familiar with it.
Okay.
C-H-A, double R-E, double T-E. So it's C-H-A-R-R-E-T-T, it's E, charrette, sorry. We call it charrette, but they call it charrette.
I've only asked for the microphone to have the opportunity to defer to Ms. Karen Bracken to explain two other words to you that I think are key in this whole process. Conspiracy, if you will. Now, Ms. Gilbert has explained to you in detail what they do, and it's a lot to swallow. You have to see it a couple of times, like my wife and I did, to really understand how they do it and how smooth they are. But I'm going to ask Karen if she will talk about consensus and visioning, and three words, the Delphi process, that helps people who are a little denser, like myself, to grab hold of this whole series of events.
What are the things you'll notice when you attend any of these meetings? All of your choices and your priorities are already written down. You didn't have any decision in what you were actually voting on, asking questions on. All of these things were already written up. It wasn't like you were brought into a meeting as the public and said, "Okay, why don't you tell me what's important?" And they were put on the wall, and people voted on them. They were already predetermined. And that's what they use. They use a technique called the Delphi technique. Basically, it's just a farce. It's a meeting to make you think that you had input, that you had the chance to make a decision on how the plan was created. Again, research the word Delphi technique. It's been used by the military, it's been used by businesses. As a matter of fact, when I worked for Verizon, I was trained on the Delphi technique, how to get people that I managed to do what I wanted them to do, but make them think that it was their decision. So I know that it's...
Like air conditioning.
Right. So I was actually, I was actually trained in the technique, I actually used the technique. So I do know that it's been used in business, education, and it's used in these plans as well. They already know what they want, they already know what the plan is, but these meetings are basically held to make you think that you had input. That's why they really don't care what you say, that's why they really don't care if you attend. I don't know, what is the population of Bradley County? Does anybody know?
Ninety-eight thousand.
Ninety-eight thousand? Okay, ninety-eight thousand people. Look how many people come to these meetings, twenty. You know, is that representing the people, ninety-eight thousand people and what they want? No. These consultants don't care if you're there. They don't care. I'm not saying these people don't care, because I really believe they do. But you got to separate your elected officials and your consultants.
The people need honesty from their council and everybody.
I think you get it from them.
We demand honesty in a way which we can understand them, right?
Absolutely. But you know, you have, you as the public have a responsibility to show up. And you know, and I'm going to take a little bit of issue here with what Bill said, because I, Donnie and I distributed information, I probably spent five hours, Donnie spent a couple hours handing out at my own cost, the little things that you got. This many people showed up. Now imagine if you had access to what they have. More people from your community showed up than show up at most of these meetings that they are advertising. Why is that? Am I that smart? I doubt it. But I was effective in what I did. They should be able to do the same thing. They are, I don't believe there's an effort being made. That's my opinion. I don't think the effort is made. You know what? If you want, if they make the effort to put these meetings out, they will have attendance. But it's your responsibility to show up when you get the information. Because let me tell you something, when you let the other side make decisions for you, you won't like it.
Amen.
Amen. All right, guys, we want to try to wind this up in the next ten minutes. Our time's running out. I think we've got a question from someone here. If you guys think of any questions, try to get them in the next ten minutes.
How come I didn't send a letter out in the mail? Because I don't look through newspapers all the time. They should come out to your house in the mail that you're having this meeting, and y'all have them at nine o'clock in the mornings when everybody's at work.
Yeah, that's just, it would be just a drop, a drop in the bucket, the amount of money it costs to send to three hundred and thirty homes in the United States.
When, when...
The homes that are affected.
I don't see any homes affected by anything that we're doing right now. When we're doing 2035, you're talking about ninety-eight thousand people. And we don't do a flyer or drop in the mail to ninety-eight thousand. If something were taking place in a, in a spot area, such as the area that we're talking about, that's on the map here, then I think the city would make a concerted effort to get everybody out. Nothing's been decided. There have been public meetings, there will be more. We can put one together as late, as early as, early September, late August. We can do that. Nothing has been decided, nothing's gone through planning commissions, nothing's come to us. And so, we can get mailings out, we can do whatever we can to get people involved. If that means, forgive me, I know you have a website. If that means getting information on his website, if he posts it, we put it on the city website. We put it in the paper, if we can get mailings out to residents, I guess the city can do that. That's, you know, you're right, it's not highly expensive. But I think before we do that, we need to make sure we have a solid date that's convenient for everybody in a convenient place.
What about August sixteenth and seventeenth, having the meeting, next meeting at Blightsville?
The...
Since we don't have a date.
The sixteenth and seventeenth, again, this is for the, this is not just about...
That's not you guys.
Yeah, it's...
But why not? Why not get it right in the community?
Do you realize that these people want to be part of planning, not just to be employed? They want to be...
Your attendance source says that very loudly, yes, ma'am.
It would cost peanuts for mailings compared to millions spent on those results.
What they're suggesting.
Can't we fire them?
But we live...
I don't want to know that.
Who do you want me to respond to?
I have another question here.
I don't know how many of the people here have a copy of this white paper, but on page three, their recommendations, and I feel like this is a fact in my neighborhood, my neighbors, encourage more housing, mixed development, and attract people with a higher disposable income. So because we're poor, working-class people on this end of town, they're going to build new housing and raise our property taxes, so the ones that have houses that can stay can afford property taxes. And then on page four, where it said the houses were taxed at thirty-five thousand? Four years ago, I paid fifty-four thousand for the home I live in. Is this telling me I've lost twenty-two thousand dollars in four years?
Their objective is to get, or part of getting this property demolished because of underlying sewers for redevelopment are the most valuable part of the city. The city has to put sewers into a redevelopment part, and that costs a bunch of money. That's valuable, and that's their objective.
Yes.
It's a standard, it's a standard practice under the UN through Agenda 21 and BCC 2035, which Karen said is more important than what's happening in the south end of town, because the south end of town is the tip of the spear of Agenda 21. It says so right in the UN thing, go after the poor people, go after the working class, destroy them, and the whole thing collapses. They wouldn't dare go to Bentley Park and try this. Do you think so, folks?
No.
You know, when the airport was expanding, that was on the tape. Listen to this, listen to this, folks. What mall, since nineteen seventy, whenever their first mall was built, has ever survived in this town? How many of them went bankrupt out of the four that are here now?
Okay, I want to address a question, JJ. Address a question, and what you're referring to is called, is a word called gentrification. It's bringing in higher, higher-class citizens into a property area, and then those people, what do they do? They bring in more property taxes. So you're generating more income for the, for the city.
When I talk, when I talk anywhere in Cleveland, people want their neighborhood safer, they want it better, they want improvement. Okay? Everybody wants that. We even had a discussion in our past council meeting about how to go about that with, believe it or not, adopting animals. And I think the route that the council takes is let the market do it. Do you think if Whirlpool were torn down and a nice urban park were built, your property values would go up? They would. What would happen? Homes would start to sell for a little bit more. Every three to four years, through the county, the county reassesses all property. It's going to happen. If it makes it nicer, your values will go up, your crime will go down. It's not, gentrification happens like, it's hard for planners to do it. It happens by the market. I've lived here fourteen years last week. I moved here in July, first week of July, so I guess fourteen years and two weeks ago. I have seen this neighborhood, homes double in price because Lee gets better. So you put something, you do something great with Whirlpool, something with, you put a new middle school in there, you put a nice park in there, you will attract businesses, you will put your roof on the home next door, you'll put a roof on your own home, you'll keep your yards up, home prices will go up. Renters, people who are renting, will wind up selling their homes, because people will buy them to fix them up, and the market will make property taxes go up, because the value you're setting, your value of your, your value will go up. Everybody wants improvements in homes.
And I want to touch on that, Bill. You know, I can speak personally from my own, say, I mean, say my home's valued at a hundred thousand dollars, it goes, if it doubles to two hundred thousand dollars, I won't be in it, because I can't pay the property tax. So that's essentially, that's essentially what he just described to you there.
I had an improvement. I bought my, I bought my house one week, and by two weeks later, I had an improvement coming across the street that I didn't know was coming in, because I bought my house from out of state. It's called the airport. I do not have the same value in my home that I sat at the posing table that week and bought it for. I cannot sell that house unless I disclose that I do not own all of my property, because the airport, in order to get an FAA grant money to build the airport, they had to take the air rights of, I don't know how many houses in a three-mile radius of that airport, and use those air rights as collateral to get the fifty-million-dollar grant from the FAA TDOT to put that improvement in. I cannot put a structure or even a tree that's over fifty foot tall, because they can come on my property twenty-four hours a day, any day of the week, without my permission, and trim my trees, or tell me not to put a second story on, because I'm in violation of the zoning. It was all done through zoning. Now, that's an improvement, and I did not get compensation for those air rights, nor did any of my neighbors.
And zoning is just another form of environmental management.
Exactly. And one of the things I say is, when was the last time you saw zoning, new zoning laws or regulations give you more freedom? When? It doesn't happen. Every time zoning, you lay come in, there's nothing these consultants do. Oh, your zoning hasn't been updated since nineteen eighty-six. Oh, your zoning hasn't been updated since two thousand and six. It already happened. People change their zoning. It happens with every plan, and it will happen with this video, guaranteeing there will be zoning requirements. It's never going to get new zoning requirements without giving off a free period. Doesn't happen.
What's the city's position on historical developments in all that areas?
The question is, what's the city's position on historical development in that area?
I'll answer it. I can't keep this.
Okay. We can get you an answer. Okay, guys, what we got to do, we got to start winding this up. I have, JJ has got some definitions and some information that he wants to hand out to you, and he's sitting back there in the bag.
There are sixteen counties in the United States of America that inspire these McBride, whoever they are. And I do not know the names of the counties. I do know that they are willing to come in and teach us how to get rid of these consultants. I will do some research and find out who the counties are and get something going.
Okay. Listen up, guys, three, please, just a second. Listen up, listen up, I'm getting this up. What I've got to do right now, listen up, just a second, please. Mike, come on forward. What I've got here is a gentleman that's, that is wanting to announce something, and he wants to talk to you guys. Just a second, okay? Mike Scalia.
Hey. I'm Mike Scalia.
Listen up, just a second, please.
All right, I'm Mike Scalia, been in Sadi Daisi, thirty-nine years old, I was born here. My parents have owned a sugar pear store in Hickson, Tennessee for ninety-five years. It started in Ohio, came down in nineteen seventeen. I'm running it now, took over so my parents could retire. I'm overtaxed as a small business owner, I know how it is. All the stuff coming out of Washington these days, it's a joke. They're violating their oath of office, they ought to be tried for treason. As governor, I would completely put a stop to any of these unconstitutional bills, the NDAA, Agenda 21, the Patriot Act. I would put a stop to it at the Tennessee border, and if they crossed our lines, they'd be put in jail. I don't believe in property taxes. I think that's just a way to control the people, you never own your property, even if it's paid for. Try not paying the taxes, it'll be gone. They use it as collateral and leverage against the citizens, and that's the only way. If you don't have property rights, you don't have sovereignty. And all these states are preaching, state sovereignty, I'm claiming state sovereignty. You know who's sovereign over the states? The people. But you know why we're not anymore? Because of property taxes. I want to reinstate property taxes to the people. You guys don't have to pay the state for your property that you own. So I've got a lot of plans, I've got, I've got some good plans for, you know, schooling and, you know, the zoning. It's just another part of control. Once they control the people, then they can do what they want. And I'm going to tell you something, I don't know if anybody's read it, but there's a book called How to Kill Eleven Million People. That is an amazing book, you need to read it. And it talks about how Nazi Germany killed all the Jews with their consent. They, they got on the train, went to the concentration camp, you know why? Because they was lied to. You guys have been lied to, as I've seen here and heard all this stuff going on up here. And as governor, I would have a, an attorney, district's attorney, a state attorney general that would prosecute any mayor that theirs to violate anybody's rights. Any legislator that writes an unconstitutional bill will be removed from office. They would honor their oath, or they would leave the office. And there's so many people, Chuck Flashman, all these people running for office, they, they have violated their oath of office, they shouldn't be allowed to run for office ever again. Because what they do is they, they take advantage and they lie to people like you to get in, and then once they get in, they do what they want. Donnie's been a good friend of mine for a long time, and he knows I am zero compromise. I don't compromise my rights for anything. I don't ask permission. When you ask permission for something, you've given your rights to the state, and they give it back to you in the form of a permit. There goes the handgun carry permit, there goes license permit, marriage permit, business permit. You don't have any rights anymore. I would completely give, put it back in the hands of the people. You wouldn't have to be asking permission to exercise your rights. You could own a business without being taxed to death, and that's where the true economy's going, going to grow, because you give, put it back in the hands of the people, the private sector, instead of the... because you give, put it back in the hands of the people, the private sector instead of the, the commercial and corporation sector. And, um, you know, it'll, it'll take care of itself. So anyway, I'm just sick and tired of everything Haslam's doing. He's a, he's a big government guy. Nobody's gonna run against him. That's gonna comp, that's gonna challenge him. So I'm stepping up and I wanna run for governor twenty-fourteen, and I hope I get your support.
I have to tell you, Mike is a genuine person. He is, um, he's the real deal, guys. And if you wanted to be your next governor, he's running a hard campaign right now. He's, uh, he's doing real well in some polls locally. Uh, Governor Haslam is, is, is dead-set on making us Sharia compliant in our state. Uh, the governor has definitely got out the direction of our state in the wrong direction, and we need to correct it. And I think this man right here would be a very good, uh, place to start. But he needs your votes. It's gonna be a ride-in, or are you on the ballot, Mike?
Uh, no, I'm gonna be on the ballot.
Okay, be on the ballot. Look for Michael Scalia, and we need to get Haslam out of there. Tell, tell your friends, your friends tell their friends, and this guy's gonna get a lot of votes, okay? Scalia, S C A L I A.
Two L's.
Two L's.
Your representative, Kevin Brooks, passed a resolution in the last legislative session against Agenda 21. So when people tell you that you're crazy, it doesn't exist, and all that lie, is the RNC passed a resolution against Agenda 21. It's going to be in the Republican platform, come the convention in August, as part of the Republican platform. If this is all a fake, why are they doing that? Why did the APA just conduct training classes to teach their facilitators how to shut down when people start talking about Agenda 21? Actually told them words not to use. Don't talk about the government funding. I have these documents. This training is, is true and factual. So anyhow, Kevin Brooks passed a resolution in the House last legislative session against Agenda 21. Senator Mike Bell sponsored a Senate companion resolution. And Governor Haslam refused to sign the resolution. He did. I believe it's the only resolution that he has not signed. He refused to sign that resolution. Why? Why? Because he was getting a lot of pressure from people not to sign that thing.
Real quick, Mike, get some answers.
Yeah, if anybody's got a smart meter on the house, y'all know what a smart meter is, from the EPB? Call the EPB, say, "Take it off my house. Put my mechanical meter back on." They'll do it. They did it for me. The, the smart meter puts off a class-two B carcinogen, which is radiation. My meter's on the opposite side of my wall, next to my bed. Can you imagine sleeping next to that meter and putting off radiation? They're just gonna give more of us kids. So the pharmaceutical corporation can profit. Anyway...
It's also monitoring.
Yeah, it is.
Do they do that for free?
Yes. Yeah. I told them, I said, "You have put me in contract with a corporation that I do not want to do contract with, against my will, which if I let your Thirteenth Amendment rights, no involuntary servitude." Tell them, "If I let your Thirteenth Amendment rights, you don't want to do business with that corporation, and you're concerned about the radiation output of it, the meter's never been properly tested, and they're putting it on in that meter, if we can push back and get them meters off of our house, that would take a big chunk out of Agenda 21."
Yeah, you look at those meters, you'll never see a UL stamp on any of those meters.
None of those meters are counted.
There's no UL on them, that they're, they're tested.
What I wanna do is, I'm gonna, okay, what I wanna do is I wanna thank you guys for being here. Pat, you got something real quick?
Real quick, this video will be on our website within forty-eight hours.
Ten ship productions.com. Uh, Bill wants to say one thing, Paul, anything last thing. Okay, I wanted to say thank you for the invite, and, uh, and appreciate it, yeah. And Donnie, thank you guys for coming.